Okay, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Community Unit School District 186 Board Meeting. And Terry, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bain?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Mrs. Door?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Miller? Absent, Mr. Rungy.
Here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance, and Nancy, we are going to give you that honor. So, I...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we need to approve the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
And I will accept the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated December the 18th of 2018, tri-county minutes dated December the 12th of 2018, tri-county bills for January of 2019, applications and reports. And I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Same.
Terry?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, the approval of District 186 bills for January of 2019. Are there any questions from the board? And again, if you do have a question, please let the fellow board members know the page you are on. Mrs. Door?
Um, okay. Uh, the cheer bus, I thought we had a donor. I thought the donor paid for that charter.
Um, paying the difference between the yellow bus and the charter bus.
Okay.
So, um, that individual will be, um, billed basically. I'll be working with that person to let them know what that part of that, that will be.
Any questions? Well, you go ahead. I just have one more. I saw where, um, there was an Amazon Prime, page one. And I know we paid one last month, so we have multiple Amazon Prime members?
No, it's one, but there's a monthly.
That's just the monthly.
Yeah, we're trying to determine, because it's a corporate account, we're trying to determine if that's something we want to continue with, if it's, if it's worth it. I'm thinking no, I think we can do without the Prime part of it. But it's just, um, you know, one of those, we wanted to try and see if it, if its value looks reasonable.
Okay.
And mine was about, uh, there were science materials unresolved that they can clear now, or...
What page do you want this?
This is the first page.
Um, every, everything has been ordered, those are the last of the hard to, these is the, these charges were from things that were actually purchased, ordered in November, mid-November, so some of those are still, um, flowing through. We had, I think, two books, um, that we were short, that I reordered, I think at the end of the last week of school. So that should be everything, every little book. I mean, and I mean, they were little, some of those were little, so we finally completed every, every little thing from that order.
That's it. I have one more. Is this the last payment for Baker McGee? Is this the last?
No, we have retainage of, I think it's about a hundred and twenty thousand, retainage for that project. But the other elevator and the, um, switchgear projects have both been paid, paid the retainer on those two.
I have one question.
Yes.
Page five. High school basketball, is that Huddle?
That is the online tool that they use, the coaches use, um, where they can look at, um, other team, you know, game films and those type of things.
Yep.
Football uses it, basketball uses it.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I will accept the motion to approve the District 186 bills.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Terry, please.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Absent.
Absent.
Here, that's all we're voting.
All right, motion, motion carries. Item seven, communications, do we have any?
We do. Dear Mr. Grody, after working for the Murphysboro School District for 27 years, I have decided that it is time for me to retire. I will be leaving my position as Secretary at the Murphysboro Middle School effective April the 1st, 2019, under the condition of the IMRF Early Retirement Incentive. To the administrators, faculty, and staff of District 186, I want to thank, thank you for everything, and most of all, thanks for the memories. Sincerely, Hilda Ely.
Recommendation is to approve Ms. Ely's retirement.
And I will, I will accept the motion to approve that. So moved. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we wish her well in retirement.
Dear Mr. Keener, I would like to request to end my school year on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. The request for an early end date is in regards to 26 of our choir members from First United Methodist Church of Cardendale have been invited to sing with a 200-piece orchestra at Carnegie Hall in New York. The final concert will be by May 26, 2019, and our rehearsal schedule in New York will be daily from May 23rd until the final concert. This invitation to sing at Carnegie Hall is once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it would be much appreciated if you would approve the requested end date of May 21st, 2019. Thank you for considering and hopefully approving the May 21st, 2019 end date request. Mary Beth Aguilar.
We recommend the approval of her request.
And I will entertain a motion to approve that request. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can we do a board retreat with her? Wish her well with that one.
Please accept my resignation as assistant softball coach at the Murphysboro High School. I am very disappointing in having to do so, but leaving early each day will cause a conflict with my current employer. I have loved my time with the girls and have much respect for you, the softball program, and Murphysboro High School. I would hope this would have no bearing on future employment opportunities with your district. Thank you, Chad Hicks.
Recommendations to approve his resignation?
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. So moved. Second?
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Please accept this letter as my two-week resignation notice as custodian. My last day of employment will be January the 25th, 2019. It has been a difficult decision for me to make, but I feel it is in my best interest at this time. I appreciate the opportunity provided to me the last two years. Sincerely, Jan Farmer.
Recommendations to approve Mrs. Farmer's resignation?
And I'll take the motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to request permission to take an online course in the spring, 2019 semester through Greenville University. I would like to apply the three graduate credit hours to the salary schedule. The course number is EDUA5442-IL. On your words, effective vocabulary instruction. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully submitted, Sherri Schimpf.
Recommendations to approve Ms. Schimpf's request?
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it?
That's it.
I have one communication to the board. I may or may not be at the February meeting. That's still up to me here. Okay, item number eight, fishbowl items, do we have any?
Yeah, I have one. Um, this is coming from Mr. Grody. This is a fishbowl item. Congratulations to Jan Bush for being selected to the Illinois Association of School Business Officials Executive Committee in the position of Treasurer. She has served this board, or she will be, she has served on this board for the past three years, being elected by her peers to the executive board, ensures that she will be continuing to serve on the board for the next four years. This coming year, 2019 through 2020, she will be the Treasurer. The following year, she will be President-elect. In 2122, she will serve as President, and in 2022, '23, she will serve as the past President. It's an honor that she was selected as a leader in the state organization, and want to ensure the board was aware of this honor. Congratulations, Jan.
Others? That was it? Okay. Next item, Freedom of Information Act request.
There were none.
All right. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinion and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
State your, state your name, Melinda, please.
I'm Melinda Pearson. I'm a social worker at General Johnny Logan. I often talk to you all as, um, a union, as a union member, but I'm not wearing a union hat. I'm wearing Melinda Pearson Employee Union Hat, um, so I'm not representing the NEA. Um, our district is soliciting feedback from parents on building facilities needs. Mr. Grody has held forums with parents at the high school and middle school so far, and has two more planned for my school, General Johnny Logan, and for others. These forums, as you are well aware, are part of our district figuring out how to spend the sales tax increase that we voted to approve in 2016 in Jackson County. At the time, I encouraged many of my friends and family to vote for this tax. It was promised to help schools, and we were told that this money would provide a dedicated income stream for our buildings and maintenance, while also allowing money that was previously allocated for buildings and maintenance to be moved around to support other non-building needs, like staffing supplies or curriculum needs. While some of that sales tax money has gone to necessary and overdue repairs in the district, such as the elevator repair and the planned improvements to the HVAC system at middle school, and yes, the improvements to the playground at my building, I personally do not feel that future sales tax money is being wisely planned. Instead, staff programs and supplies that would go directly towards student learning is being ignored while the district focuses on new construction and state-of-the-art facilities. For instance, on the heels of a beautiful, but very expensive, performing arts center and office space, the district is likely to start the bidding process to put turf on our football field and build a new press box with sales tax money, none of which support any PE, band, or any other educational curricular priority that was ever discussed by this board in the nearly four years I've been attending these meetings. So, while district leadership tries to determine if new buildings need to be built, or if major additions will be planned and millions of dollars spent, I believe we should be asking questions related to what happens on the inside of our building. How can we provide our students with the highest quality of education that we can afford? In my opinion, changes it made to our buildings that support those improvements to instruction, programs, and curriculum should be our first priority. At the same time, I recognize roofs need to be replaced, air conditioners need service, gutters need updated, funds need to be spent on things that don't necessarily have a direct impact on student learning, but that are necessary costs associated with owning property. But I don't think that we should be a district that literally doesn't pay our aides a living wage, a district with no plan to decrease our special ed numbers, a district that can't afford additional and desperately needed personnel in our elementary buildings, while we are also a district shelling out millions of dollars in tax money to build shiny new buildings and facilities that will not make our students smarter, better prepared for college or the workforce, or better citizens of our community. In short, as a staff member who was encouraged to support this, support this tax, I feel swindled. And worse, as someone who in turn encouraged others to support it, I feel that I swindled them. I supported this tax because this money was promised to support Murphysboro Schools, but building schools is not the same as supporting schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other employee concerns? All right, thank you. Before we move into old business, um, tonight is, is kind of a special night. Um...
Don't you roll your eyes.
This is, this is Nancy's last meeting as the Secretary of the Board. And, uh, just to kind of give everybody an idea, she has worked for this district for 23 years. Uh, the last 16 years, she has added the Secretary to the Board. I think I got all the numbers right?
No, no.
Okay.
I don't even know myself.
Good, good, good. During that time, she has been the administrative assistant to three superintendents, Mr. Muggie, Mrs. James Gross, and Mr. Grody, and all three are here tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She has also served four Board Presidents, Mr. Bain, Mr. Austin, Mr. Crips, and myself, and all four of us are here tonight as well, so thank you for coming. I don't know, sitting in this chair, I can really convey what she does for the people that she has served here. Uh, she has given more to this district than she's gotten in return, that I could definitely tell you. Uh, she's guided all of us that I just mentioned, uh, in times when we needed it, and, uh, sometimes kind of probably kicked us in the rear when we needed that too. But Nancy, we, uh, we wish you many, many years of happy and healthy retirement, and the four Presidents got you a little gift.
Oh, Lord.
With, she's not here tonight, but we could not have done it without Jill Gray.
Wow.
She...
What's that mean?
Because we would have no idea what to get you.
Oh.
But...
Oh, good Lord. It's in a trash can?
She got this. We appreciate her help.
Wow. Do you want me to open it?
Absolute. Congratulations on your retirement.
First of all, I do appreciate all my former superintendents and Board Presidents and people who have helped me through the years as well. Um, I can't get through this. It is much appreciated, and I can't, I can't say anything more than that. It means a lot, it really does. I, my position as Secretary has been my favorite position with the district. I've learned a lot from people, from students, from teachers, and so it's both. It's, okay, it's a little... Oh, my. Oh, my. Good Lord. Well, it's a pretty box. Oh, my word. That is gorgeous. It's, it's a bracelet, a gold bracelet.
That's from your favorite jeweler, jeweler.
Oh, really? Pass it around the room.
Yes.
That is gorgeous. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Oh, my God. Every time I wear it, I will think of the district and think of the, think of the special people that really have meant a lot to me, truly. Thank you.
Dr. Muggie?
I would love to. I just want to say to Nancy that I am extremely grateful for having the opportunity to have worked with you. Um, you know, back then, as a new superintendent, I could not have asked for a better mentor, and I mean that, I learned so much from you. Um, I'm sorry, that's what I said, I need to speak up. Um, and I just want you to know that I'm thankful for your support and your guidance, and I'm very proud of your service to District 186, and I hope you're proud of it too. And I just want to say that I, um, just appreciate you, and I'm so excited for you in this next stage of your life, this new adventure, and I just, I wish you all the best, love and happiness, and get to enjoy those grandbabies without having to get up the next morning. This is what it's all about. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Very much.
Dr. Muggie?
Just one brief comment, my utmost congratulations to the boss. She was the boss.
That's true.
Hey, I learned a lot from you.
That is true.
I, uh, I'd like to say thank you for Dr. Muggie. She was the secretary at Blankenship's, and you used to go in there and, 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 thank you for, for seeing the talent and hiring her, 'cause like, Dr. James Gross said.
Yeah, I was a huge feelinger.
I bet, I bet you were. And we appreciate it.
Mr. Bain, Mr. Austin, Mr. Crips, any of you three want to say anything? Yes, sir.
I'm in hell of a way because I've been busting out to say this. Nancy is the epitome of grace and professionalism. I don't care what her position is, she would be the same in any position. If she really likes that bracelet, then Joe had nothing to do with it.
We went shopping.
That's the story we're telling, thanks for that. Just one other thing, it's, she, she helped me immensely, and I'm, I can't express in words what that meant to me, but I'll give you one example. We're in closed session, everybody's voicing their opinion, because I want to include everybody, I want to hear from everybody, and, but I heard her say under her breath, "Oh, come on, I knew it was time to end discussion." Congratulations, too.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, thank you.
You know, I was the first president that worked with Nancy, and as Dr. Muggie and I spoke coming into the building...
I was pretty green, though.
Well, I know, you were very good. Um, I remember when you were hired, when Dr. Muggie recruited you from Blankenship's, and it was a conversation, should we or should we not? And it was like, yeah, we really need Nancy. And, uh, you worked with Kathleen Miller for a number of years, and most of us remember Kathleen as a former educator and then Board Secretary. Uh, Kathleen was a stabilizing force. Nancy learned from a really great person. Nancy carried Kathleen's torch on. Kathleen was so proud of Nancy and what she was able to accomplish as the successor to her role as Board Secretary, and it was really a good team effort for all of us. I mean, we all learned at this table. We all have a lot of voices, lots of opinions. Nancy was the common factor for a lot of us, and, you know, kind of coming to consensus and trying to do what's right for the number of students that we are, have entrusted into us to educate in this community. So, Nancy, with all sincerity, you've had a great career with the district, honored to have worked with you, and certainly thank you for your service.
Thank you. Means a lot.
Okay.
All right. Back to business.
Before we, before we move into old business, I'm going to take a moment, because we did ask these people to be here. Do you want to get up and leave?
We're the first two out the door. We understand.
Can you call him?
Thanks.
Absolutely. I'll talk to you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. You leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought we were going to the bar. Jerry, you got this here.
I know.
You guys, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for including us, buddy, I appreciate it.
Okay, now back to business. Under old business, first item is the approval to bid the Murphysboro Middle School HVAC Project Phase One.
Yeah, we've previously approved engaging the architects to prepare the bid specs for the MMS HVAC project. Uh, the administration recommends at this time that we go out to bid for the, uh, consideration of the costs, and that will be brought forward at the next meeting. Um, I will, I will say that I think we're going to pull asbestos out of this bid and, and bid it separately, or, uh, depending on the amount that the estimate is, I give it a couple of quotes. But we're going to do that separately, so it won't be a part of the big bid package and get the, uh, the upcharge that the general will add, general contractor, whoever gets the job.
So explain to me why there's a benefit in pulling that out, making it a separate?
Because if the, if the, whoever's bidding the whole project bids that out, they'll be able to then up to, say, you know, add a, a percent to oversee what they do, and it really is a separate...
They're specialists.
It is, so the specialty work is...
Yeah, it's a special...
Yeah.
So, they're going to bump it 10% or whatever.
Yeah.
We did the same thing with the middle school elevator project. We pulled that out and, and were able, got competitive quotes, and we were able to get a better deal on that.
So the recommendation is to move forward so we can get prices for next month.
All right, questions, other questions from the board?
The ceiling and lighting in the classrooms, how many are you talking about, three or four?
We ended up with what?
Phase one would be two classrooms and one storage room. Phase two, all the classrooms, and cafeteria, locker room, thank you.
We are including the doors, though, in the asbestos abatement, all of the doors that are old, we're going to get all the doors in there so that...
That's it, so.
For the summer.
I'm sorry, what, phase one was two classrooms and what?
A storage room.
Storage, okay. Are those two classrooms, those chemistry ones that...
They are, um, Mr. Moore's room and Mrs., uh...
In the basement on the west...
This teacher, I have your name. I'm sorry. And, uh, they're, the two rooms that still have asbestos in them, and so it's not the... So that's why it's those two rooms.
And the HVAC cottage, the cottage area?
Cottage area and a small gym.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so at that meeting, we talked about maybe not using that cottage, like doing something different out there, and not maybe using that cottage area, so...
Right, so maybe if we used it for storage, we'd still wanted HVACed, we'd want it temperature-controlled.
Would we even, what if we tore it down, though?
I wouldn't want to, in that building, I wouldn't want to give up the space. Right now, we're looking at like the two garages, turning those into classrooms at some point in time, because we need more of those classrooms, so I wouldn't want to give up the, the storage space for them, as far as tearing it down. It wouldn't, it'd add, where it's low, where the cottage is located, it wouldn't add to the parking problem or any other reasonable problem, so you'd end up with two storage areas that are currently classrooms, so...
So, Jim, you had an opportunity to refine your scope a little more as you go through the detailed design and specing it out. How do you stand on your initial cost estimates for the...
We're still, we believe we're going to be less than what our initial estimate is, but the second phase is going to tell, tell the tale, because that's the big phase.
Sure.
Um, we have, the HVAC for the big gym has turned into be a little bit of a structural nightmare. Uh, that's why we pulled it out from this summer, moved to next summer, um, because it's, logistically, we just can't get it 100% designed for this summer.
Sure.
There's some prob, there's some problems with that roof on the top, not that there's problems with the roof, but there's coordination problems with the roof and new...
Try and put the weight on it.
Yeah. So...
That sounds like an expensive fix when we do get to that, though.
Potentially. That's why we're pulling it out, but we believe we still have the money in there for every bit of structural need for that. It's just how we position everything.
If we remodel, though, the middle school and move the cafeteria down to that other end, like we talked about possibly, and changing up some parking and do, would it be better to maybe have those plans before we start doing HVAC?
I don't, I don't think so. Um, and really, the scope of the asbestos work that we're doing this summer, we had talked about possibly just abating the whole thing, but we wouldn't want to abate the cafeteria right now, because we don't know what we're going to be doing with it, nor are we going to do this. So what, the places that we're abating are really limited to where they need to do the work. We had a long conversation today about how this would be coordinated, what would be the, the best way to do it, because I did share with, uh, Jim, the idea that the west end is not ADA accessible, and so we need to include that. The idea of moving the cafeteria over there so that you get fresh pipes out to the bill, you know, out to the main, and you're closer to the playground, and then try and get everything where the cafeteria is and the bandroom is, get all the specials on that side. So, we really talked about all those aspects and those pieces, and, um, I believe that[1695.12] And then try and get everything where the cafeteria is and the bandroom is, get all the specials on that side. So we really talked about all those aspects and those pieces and I believe that the, the specs right now are reasonable and not, won't, won't cause any extra costs.
So if we divide up the, the current cafeteria and make those individual classrooms, there won't be any extra costs associated with HVAC then at that time? If we've already done all this?
Well, currently, we're not, we would not be doing any HVAC in the cafeteria.
Okay.
That unit was replaced.
About that many years ago, yeah.
Two or three years ago. So it was on the health and safety survey, they replaced it because they had a problem. So we weren't going to address, do anything to that. At the time of renovation, then you would because you'd pull, it's on the same system as the auditorium. So then the auditorium gets its own system, which is the current system and then the new system for all the classrooms.
You'd add a.
Which would be the same type of system we're planning on putting in all the rest of the classrooms. But you can't do anything until you have classrooms.
And these are the rooms that are leaking or that's later?
No, that's the west side, there's one room that's, that's still.
It's the west side, okay, all right, right, okay. So those.
That's not necessarily a roof issue, is it?
No, that's a foundational issue.
It's one where you got to pull the stairs and.
Yeah.
So there were, we, we initially looked and we talked today about abating all the asbestos because the, the projected costs were less than what we initially thought. But knowing that there are some of those questions of what we're going to do moving forward, um, thought it would be best not to go in and abate a room, a floor tile. And spend those costs to abate that when they're, you know, when the tile is, is fine and intact and wait to see, you know, what those future plans are. So we're, you know, just what's absolutely necessary to deal with the, uh, the HVAC install and the, the asbestos that needs to come in. So we're trying to, trying to be as frugal as we can on that, you know, keeping in mind all those, those needs that we're going to have moving forward.
Well, but let me go back to the leaky west end, um, is that something you guys talked about, um, how to fix that, what, what's involved with that?
What would be involved with that is to take out those stairs and you, you, the, um.
Yeah, but like a dollar amount?
Seal the foundation portion.
Do you have a dollar amount or talk about what that would take to do that?
I, I don't know because, um, really what you'd do at that time is that's where we talked about extending the whole entrance area and making that, that, that west end, that ADA accessible. Because right now, there's just that one really thin staircase and so what you need to do is open up, go into that classroom and actually figure out some design that would make that side of the building accessible. But this project here would not get in the way of being able to do that.
Any other questions?
This project here is basically continuation on the boilers that we put in several years ago that we were supposed to do the following summer to take the load off of the boilers.
Right.
That we didn't have the finances to do, so this should have been phase two, two or, two or three years ago.
Right. Right. Other questions? All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve to bid the MMS HVAC project, phase one.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Say it.
Terry?
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item number two is the approval to bid the Marcusboro High School Athletic Field Project.
Again, we have previously approved to have the architects write up the bid specs for the MHS Athletic Field. The administration recommends that we go out to bid for consideration of the costs.
Questions from the board?
Track field, press box and football field also means soccer field, right?
Correct.
If it goes to turf, yeah.
And what is, I mean, I know we don't have, have a bid, so we don't know, but this summer we'll have to do something with the.
Have to do the press box.
But I mean, the grass, didn't we say we had to do irrigation and drainage and league crown and?
We don't do turf, you need to basically redo the sod, put new topsol down, put new sod down, raise all the spring grass. That's not, that's not a cheap. You're talking three or four hundred thousand dollars just for that.
And if we do a new press box now and then in a couple of years or a year down the road, we do new bleachers and like. Are we going to be using the same press or are we going to be tearing down and just doing a new press box then?
You can reuse the same press, it's a prefabricated press box, so.
There's nothing wrong with the bleachers, is there?
You're talking about flipping sides?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that was.
But if you flip side, if you flip sides, then I would suggest.
What's?
A much larger type press box and then that could be used as a visitor's.
The, I think the, the concern I've heard more about that whole thing would be, um, the dressing rooms underneath the bleachers, the, the bathrooms. You know, those, those facilities need to be, um, some beautification needs to happen to those facilities. And if the press box is up there, we can still make modifications to the concession stands in the bathrooms later on, so that won't get in the way either, so.
Just to move that to the other side, that'd be all restrooms and everything else over there, so that would be.
That'd be a cost to the.
The, the, the dream of, of getting those bleachers would be, there's a lot of other things that need to happen first.
You have to be careful doing too much to the bleachers because once you start touching them, then you have to bring them to the most current standard, which is much steeper, much more compact.
And is the only benefit of moving them, so we're not looking in the sun for the first twenty minutes of a game? Or is there something else I'm missing?
No. It would be the only benefit.
Is it, right?
Okay, I just want to make sure there's something else on.
That's not.
I mean, I know it's about us in a football game, I know that.
The, the bleachers are not, not, like, yeah, that's on, it's on the list of things that people would like to see done, but not.
In the time chain, isn't it starts to get darker?
Okay, I just want to make sure they're literally different.
Other questions from the board?
How are we on many, Jim, so far? Still spot on, okay.
Yeah, we're right, we're right at real close to, it may be just a little budget wise, may have gone up just a hair. But I think people I've talked to, numbers are, numbers are pretty good.
Okay, and we think we've got some interest?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Numbers are interested, that's good.
If we, because we talked one time about moving the high jump, I should say that, all, all that stuff.
High jump, high jump gets moved, uh, long jump, triple jump gets moved.
Right, that's what I meant.
Um, high jump will be at the south end, long jump triplet, triple jump will be basically against the south fence. We're putting in a new piece of fence.
We would put all the jumping so the jump coaches could be in the same spot.
All the field, like, would shot put go down there, all the field events go down there or?
No, we, we're not moving the shot or the discus.
But all of that stuff wouldn't be that expensive, I mean, moving those field event kind of things. Okay, I guess so.
Yes, yes and no, it, it could be done, it's, there's not that budget in this.
And then there's some left from the auditorium, correct? That we have to spend there?
Um, we're projecting, we're, we're still have, have some final bills that are coming in and some possible furniture that needs to be purchased. Um, but I'm estimating that we'll have at least four hundred and fifty thousand left from the auditorium project that we could put towards, it has to be spent on the high school.
It has to be spent at the high school.
So we could put that towards the, um, the high school athletic facility project.
And then as far as the facilities tax, sales tax, this is what it's going for, it's building permanent stuff, right? We can't do.
Right.
Curriculum based, we can't buy desks, we can't hire program. But spending on desks, we should be able to move money for other stuff that we were spending on that out of the ed fund or?
I'm sorry?
When we're using facilities tax for building project, it normally would leave money in the ed fund or where's the savings coming in?
What happens is, is if you have to, if, if there's a project that needs to get done, like, we, we haven't done the, uh, the, the phase two of the middle school HVAC projects because we didn't have the money to really do it. That would have to come out of your, your ed funds, your health, life, safety, you know, you'd have to figure out where that money's coming from. The county facility sales tax is a dedicated fund for those kind of projects. And so, um, without taking money out of the ed fund or doing all this other jockeying around adding, you know, going out to referendum for bonds or anything, you.
And it has to be for.
It has to be for facilities.
Something that's permanent in there.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I got a text from Keener, the fire alarm went off at the middle school, but there is no fire.
That's good, that's good.
Any other questions from the board on this topic? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve to go to bid for the MHS Athletic Field Project. Second?
Second.
Terry?
Mr.? Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
No. Motion carries. Item number three is the approval of the 2018-2019 seniority list, which is enclosure number one.
Uh, we've not been notified of any changes by the faculty or staff, so the administration recommends that we approve it as presented.
Board have any questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the seniority list. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, moving to new business. Item number one is the approval of resolution abating the tax. Sorry, I was going to finish reading, but. Abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year 2018 to pay debt service on the general obligation school bonds. Alternative Revenue Source Series 2017 of the district and that is enclosure number two.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Uh, the board previously approved selling alternate revenue bonds in 2017 to fund, uh, various projects. The board passed a resolution at that time to fund this with county facility sales tax money. The recommendation's to approve the resolution that abates the 2018 property taxes levied to pay debt services on the 2017 alternate revenue bonds. And so this is basically just putting that final stamp on the fact that we sold bonds, these are regarding the bonds we sold in 2017 that we did so because of the county facility sales tax.
Questions?
Basically, town is to pay the bonds with the facility sales tax.
Yes.
That's when we sold the bonds, that's what we said we would be using to fund it, so.
And the reason that there will be an annual resolution is, um, this kind of bonds, you have to have a backup in case something were to happen and we weren't able to generate the county facility sales tax in order to make those payments, then, um, uh, property taxes could be used to pay that. So the, so every year we'll have to do the resolution to, to ensure that, um, property taxes aren't assessed to taxpayers to pay these bonds, it is the county facility sales tax.
What's the dollar amount?
On the, um, abatement, uh, this year, the debt service, hang on. Um, four hundred and fifteen thousand will be the, the, um, next amount that we're abating.
What's the, what would next year be?
Four seventy-one, three.
How much is that approximately per, like, taxpayer that they would get back?
Um, well, that's the next one.
Oh, okay.
Because this doesn't, this isn't, um, um, we didn't do a levy for this to begin with because it's, the intent was to use county facility sales tax. So I'll give you that answer next one.
Yeah, we really need you guys to all pass this one.
This is the one we basically approved, yeah, we approved it seventeen to pay, we just got to follow it up with a formal resolution.
Right.
Other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of abating the taxes. Second?
Second.
Terry?
Mr. Beaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
No.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item number two is the approval of resolution transferring funds from the School Facility Occupation Tax Fund of Community Unit School District 186 in Jackson County to the Bond and Interest Fund of said school district and abating a portion of the taxes heretofore levied to pay debt service on the taxable general obligation limited school bond series 2009A of the said school district.
And the board, this is the, the, the bonds that the board sold back in 2009 that we're still paying on. The, this was previous to the county facility sales tax, uh, that we had received. So the administration recommends to approve the resolution abating the 2009 property taxes levied to pay the debt service on the 2009 bonds.
So how much was that?
So, so, um, estimating, um, the new EAV, what that might be based on the CPI and, um, potential new property. Looking at between ninety, for a hundred thousand dollar home, um, the abatement being worth about ninety-five to a hundred dollars on the property owner's tax bill. Now, of course, that doesn't take into account new assessments or.
Right, or if any other body did.
Any other taxing body has an increase or any of those things.
They could, we could give this money back to them and they could see an increase in their tax bill.
Correct. That, I mean, this is just strictly, we abate this, that's what it would be worth, you know, all other factors being equal.
The dollar amount we're abating?
Um, four, uh, four eighty-one, six oh five and thirty-eight cents.
And what about next year?
Pardon?
What could next year be, do you have an idea?
Uh, next year, yes, the, uh, four seventy-nine, four oh seven. So we, if, if the board, um, votes to abate this year, then we have two years after that, basically the full amount, which is close to four eighty and then the, after that, it drops down to one sixty-one. So including this, we only have four years of potential abatement, really if you look at it, three and a half before the bonds are gone.
So essentially, somebody who has a hundred thousand dollar house, they would save ninety-five dollars this year, next year, the next year, so call it two hundred and ninety dollars. But after that.
But then the school district loses?
It may not be, yeah, school district lose that amount off of the county facility sales tax.
And they may not save ninety dollars.
Right. So it's not, it would sunset, I mean, at some point it would stop. It's not a yearly recurring thing.
Well, the abatement on the 2009 bonds would cease because the bonds have been fully paid.
The bonds are gone, so, yeah, that tax would, would be gone then at that point and that savings would continue because the bonds are gone.
In a three-year period, it would be a million, one point two million essentially that we would not have to spend.
Correct.
I would almost say that they may not see an overall savings because somebody else may tax, but it would still be ninety-five less if we abate, right? I mean, let's say for simplicity, their tax is a thousand dollars, we do this, it's nine hundred. So, I mean, even if we don't abate, we're still talking about they would have a higher increase in taxes whether or not somebody else.
Correct.
Would we not be the largest taxing authority on most individuals' bills that are within our district?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
We're probably two-thirds of every taxpayer.
So then we have to levy more money to do improvement projects later on, uh, because we did this? Kind of?
Well, we, hopefully we won't have to levy, we can, you know, we, we've kind of looked at what we can do, um, to continue to use the balance of the county facility sales tax. Because for these, um, for these three years and then a portion of the, the fourth year, it's about a third of the amount that we are receiving in county facility sales tax the first three years, a third of that. And then that, those bonds are dropped off and we're, and we can look at those to do more than paying the seventeen bonds, the, a bond issue, si, county facility sales tax bond issue to, to cover these two projects that we just, uh, approved to go out for bid tonight. And anything forward, moving forward?
You said four eighty-one this year, four seventy-nine next year, and then it went to one sixty?
Uh, forty-one again and change and then one sixty-one.
To one sixty-one, the third year?
Yeah, and that's in the twenty-one, twenty-two, um, fiscal year.
And then last year, it was like one seventy-five last year?
Uh, we abated, what was I, uh, one twenty-five, one twenty-seven, one twenty-five, which was equal to half of the revenues that we collected in 2017. Because we only received, uh, the first two payments that we received at all were November, December of seventeen.
No other district in Jackson County is abating this, are they?
I don't know of any other district that is abating county facility sales tax.
Doesn't Murphy's Row the only board in Jackson County that, or no?
I don't know if anybody else had any, had any bonds outstanding they could have baited.
Bonds out.
I would think of Carbondale Wood.
Ninety-five?
Yeah, for sure, I mean, they've got a new building, they got, you don't think.
No, they would have the bonds, but they didn't.
They didn't say because they didn't.
They didn't set a resolution to abate.
Right, they didn't, they didn't speak, um, when we were talking about it because both Carbondale districts were silent.
Yeah, Carbond, both Carbondale District didn't really support the sales tax, so they didn't.
They didn't not support it.
They were just silent.
They're very neutral.
They didn't, they didn't, they didn't participate, I mean, they come and, but they didn't go out there and, yeah, they were on shirt tails because anyone sticking out there.
They already had city tax that they, which is, that they are spending the money.
I, I think Kevin kind of opens the door for the question, when that referendum was taken to the voters, wasn't there at least an understanding or commitment or a promise, I don't know exact words, that if the voters voted for it, there would be some tax relief for them? Because the burden of funding some of the facilities would now be on the people spending money, therefore, sales tax would be generated and property owners wouldn't have to pick it up. It was kind of like there would be some sales, sales tax coming into the coffers that could help reduce property taxes.
Correct. And sales tax is paid by all people in Jackson County and then distributed out based on enrollment. So we, you know, we receive a, a, a larger share based on our enrollment than we would have if we were doing that tax just in, you know, Murphy's Row. So the fact that it's a county.
Because we're getting a portion of what's being spent in Carbondale that benefits.
We are.
But, but we did abate last time.
We did, yeah, we abated a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in the first year.
Other questions? All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution transferring the funds of the tax abatement. So, in a second?
I'll second.
Terry? Terry?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
No.
Mr. Green?
No.
And Mrs. James?
No.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number three is the school calendar, this is informational only.
And I just simply need two volunteers to meet with the MEA regarding next year's calendars. Don't all speak at once.
When is the meeting?
Scheduled once I know who is going to be at the meeting.
I'll do it if it doesn't, if it's not in February.
I don't know.
I think that's what he's asking.
Contact says that we will meet with them in February.
I did it last time, if nobody else has, I'll do it.
Did you volunteer? Was it two out?
Yeah, I'm sure. I like, I like school calendar. Can I call my wife during the meeting to make sure it's okay?
No.
I got Shannon, who else do I have?
I'd add...
There are representatives.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number four, we need to set the class of twenty-nineteens graduation and baccalaureate dates and times, they would appreciate that.
And I've talked to Mr. Ellemeyer and I've sent you the recommendation. Administration recommends that we graduate the class of two thousand and nineteen on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM.
Questions?
Yeah, baccalaureate that morning?
Eleven AM that morning.
All right, hearing no questions, and I'll entertain a motion to set the graduation date and time.
In the high school gym, correct? In Memorial Gymnasium.
So have they talked about senior fest yet and same night, same...
A little bit of discussion's been going on, um, kind of a discussion with the senior class on whether they want to have senior night or senior fest that night, or would they rather go to Six Flags and take a senior trip to Six Flags that weekend, uh, so it's in discussion with the senior class and the sponsors. Just a little bit of info on graduation, it's been earlier, uh, the past three or four years, um, probably around the fourteenth, twelfth to the fourteenth-ish. A lot of the faculty have, have spoke up that it's, it's putting the school in a bad situation because the seniors didn't graduate, and there's two weeks of class left for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and the culture is, uh, school's out, when in reality, school is not out and there's still final exams to be taken by the underclassmen. So this would put every, all four classes, uh, out of school right around the same time.
Now, last year...
Final exams for all four grade levels would be at the same time.
Last year you wanted the times earlier though, because you said everybody was coming when it was later like this, having early...
Mr. Wilson, and I can't necessarily speak for Mr. Wilson, but I believe Mr. Wilson's thoughts were, he would like to have it on a Sunday, um, where there's no conflicts with any sports or anything like that. The weekend where it was, I think there were a few conflicts with sports through the day, but if it was on a Sunday, there was no athletics. The only conflict, I think, that weekend is boys track and field state finals will be on that Saturday. The meet is usually over by two thirty, three o'clock, get home by six.
I thought there were, it was earlier in the day though, like, because when it was at night...
So I'm gonna be able to leave graduation, go grab dinner.
Yeah, or people were coming in drunk or something like that.
You want to minimize the celebrations before graduation, however, if you don't do it at the, if you don't do it early enough, two weeks early, you don't have any state finals.
I don't, I'm talking about the time.
Right, no, and what I'm saying is that the, the weekend, if you do it one week early, you're dealing with state track finals that kids need to come back for, and seven o'clock is, is, is much more in line with the kids being able to make it back.
To get back.
So if you do it two weeks earlier, you don't have the state final, and so you can go at an earlier time.
But, yes, we will have to sacrifice and have to work harder with crowd control.
Breathalizers. Other comments, questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the graduation date and time as presented. Second? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is the Jackson Growth Alliance revitalization efforts.
We have two members of the audience who are gonna step forward. From the Jackson Growth Alliance, we got Cheryl, Ben, and Brooke Guthman. I've sent out the, the, the package from the core information, and I, I, I sent out the, the request that, that, you know, what other people have paid and everything, so really, um, kind of talked to the board, and it's, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, as a taxing body to, to then fund this, and so there's some, some questions and whatnot about that. But I think what we're looking at, administration would recommend up to around twenty-five hundred dollars. That said, questions?
So we need, you need sixty thousand, am I right on that number?
Sixty-nine thousand, I believe.
I'm sorry, for sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine.
So seventy grand?
Look, they can't sign the contract until they've got half of it, is that what I read?
Right, our, our board has requested.
Okay.
We raise at least half the funds before we actually execute the contract.
Is there, I guess, my question would be, because I, I talked with some board members about this, is that, like, phase one downtown building, right, revitalizations, thirty-eight thousand. Is there any way to be able to just do that portion, if, if you get halfway to what your goal is, that would be the halfway point almost? And so is that, is it possible to do some of these à la carte, or what happens if you get halfway, you sign the contract and then...
We actually had that conversation about the à la carte. Most of the work is going into the downtown revitalization, so a lot of, that's why the other pieces are so much lower priced, is because a lot of the work's already being done in the downtown revitalization part. But I think we agree that the best is just to do it all, because it all fingers together. For instance, with the housing, I mean, you can have a good downtown but have a bad housing market, so it kind of works together on that. And then when you start talking about the creating an art culture, um, that's even lower of an amount.
I think it's a great program, reading it, I think it's wonderful, it's obviously desperately needed, um, and I'm assuming this is, maybe I missed it, the top part is pledged and the bottom part is?
Top part is like members of the group.
Oh, okay.
The, the top part is... Right, is our regular membership, so you know kind of who's involved with Jackson Growth Alliance and regularly contributes.
And then the bottom one is, um...
The project-specific contributions.
And it's a Murphysboro project, so that's why I'm not...
We are a regional group, and the way I look at it is, you know, if Murphysboro succeeds, so does, you know, Carpenter succeeds, so does Murphysboro, so we're in it all together. Um, but we are focusing on Murphysboro because Carpenter kind of has, they have their own creative placement project and program in place right now. Um, they actually have a economic development person on staff, um, and that's why we're focusing on Murphysboro to start with on this project.
We hope this will really just be step one of something that continues on. If we, we achieve success and we're happy with the relationship with this particular consultant and expert, um, you know, we hope that after these first phases are complete, that we will look and continue building in the future too.
He does do regional, like I did talk to him about, for instance, specifically the school district, and he says there are actually expanded regional plans that can be done, so this is kind of a small piece of that that we could expand upon. Um, and as far as where the district would come into play too, this will be driven by a steering committee, and he does advise to have, um, a student of some sort that sits on the steering committee because, one or two, um, and actually, I was talking to the Jackson CEO group this morning, um, they're, we're hosting them at our site right now, and, you know, ask them the hard questions, because at the end of the day, we could end up with this great community, but if we can't get our students to stay here and, you know, keep that talent here in our own community, then we're losing out. So, um, we would like to involve them as far as what do they want to see in a community, what are the must-haves, because in, it's a generational thing, like, what they want in a community's gonna be different than what me or Cheryl may want in a community, but it's all valid and it's all important, and it's about creating, creating a cultural experience in a community as well as, um, the quality of life items that...
I'm looking at it all right, I think, Kristin, you tell me, okay, I look at these numbers and I see about fifty-five thousand collected so far? Okay, so what am I not getting?
The bottom half.
The bottom half. Okay, so I guess that's what I was asking, so I didn't ask my question right the first time. Eighteen thousand is all you've collected at this point, and you need to get to about thirty-five thousand to sign a contract.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And we have several people, like, I, I put them on there so that you know that we've spoken to some of the other businesses, this is a month pending, and that they just needed either to go to a president or a board or things like that to actually confirm an amount, so, um, so you're not really seeing probably the total that we've gotten so far, but...
I guess I probably need to piggyback off what, I, I do support, I think it's great, and I'm so excited you found somebody to do this. I just, I have reservations about the school district throwing in money. I completely get that it's all connected and everything works, um, I, I don't know why, just something in me has a holdback of us throwing in even, you know, a few thousand dollars when we're just talking about all this other money that we're going, it's, I don't know.
Well, I think, can I add to that real fast? This is gonna be about an eighteen-month project, and the way I look at it, it's probably the first third, it's gonna be in three installments. The first third's gonna be the hardest to get, is because he's not here, nobody really knows anything about him or what he's gonna do. So I feel like it's gonna be much easier to approach individuals and ask them for the support, but if we don't have the core support from the major players, then how can we ask other people to support the project as well? So that's why, um, you know, the city of Murphysboro, um, Jackson Growth Alliance ourselves are putting in money as well as our time, and so it's gonna be a more sellable project with more support we can get on the front end.
I want to thank, number one, y'all taking the initiative to do this because I think it's wonderful. I was along the same lines as where Christie is, I was there, but I, the way I look at it, uh, this is an investment.
Absolutely.
Um, and provided it works, and we're gonna say it's gonna work, this school district will be the, probably the largest benefactor of that success. And so I think this is a part of us getting involved with it as well, and I was exactly where you were, Christie, uh, when I first heard of it, but as I started talking to people, it's, that's the way I look at it.
Well, I was gonna say, it's a risk, I mean, it's a risk for all of us, I mean, to put in, and we're not going to get anywhere, we're not gonna go to the next level if people aren't willing to take any risk.
We can't wait for somebody else to do it.
No, we're gonna do that.
We have to.
We just need the support, because I don't, I, if I had seventy thousand dollars in my bank, I'd pay for it myself. I'll tell you that right now.
The momentum and the energy, and, and I, I believe the people in the community really are behind this now, you know, we have some leadership of what's gonna happen, and it's definitely, it's, it's going to happen, and I, everywhere I've spoken, I said, I, I give you, I know you don't know me, but I, I give you my personal guarantee of that we aren't gonna quit, we're not gonna let this fizzle, this isn't just another committee that's gonna be formed or go away and, and no one will hear about it and wonder whatever happened to that project, or, you know, those talks and things like that, so, um, we're really all behind this, and, um, you definitely, I, I totally understand where you think, well, school district rises, school giving, but it is totally, you can't look at us and talk to, to the city about this as well, you can't look at us as an expense, you have to look at us as an investment, and I guarantee there's gonna be a strong return on investment, um, because, of course, we're trying to build that, that tax base, right, the commercial and industry, and create that, um, thriving economy, and promote homeownership, and get rid of some of the, you know, the lackadaisical things, and attract tourism, tourism is actually gonna be a big component of what we're trying to achieve with this, so that you're bringing outside wealth into the community. Um, and then through all of those property taxes and things like that, newly created with successful businesses, uh, that will, of course, flow through right to the schools.
If I could make a couple quick comments, I mean, I support the concept, I support the dollar amount that administration's recommending. Um, I know that we're not the contracting agency with this third party, you do have a very good firm, well-regarded, but I'm a little fuzzy on the deliverables, and I would encourage your organization to get more granular with the consultant, to really kind of pin them down on some detailed deliverables, some specifics, because I've dealt with firms like this before, this is a very good firm, but I think there needs to be a clear expectation of what your group is looking for and an agreement on the other side.
And we are looking to that, part, part of our, um, process right now is that there, a lot of people have approached us and said, well, you know, Murphysboro, the city of Murphysboro has a comprehensive plan that they recently completed, um, there have been other drawings and kind of work, um, done towards kind of a similar vein, and, of course, we don't want to duplicate anything that, any work or plans or drawings or anything that already existed, so we are meeting actually, um, next week or the week after, the twenty-fourth, um, several parties are coming together to review and gather all of those, that previous work that has been done and, and review any kind of drawings, I know SIU actually kind of did a beautification, um, drawings through the school of architecture in the past, but again, it kind of is sitting on a shelf, so we are gathering all of that information and are going to review it and make sure, and, and at that point, we can go to the consultant and say, here's what's already exists, how can this complement our efforts, or is this work that's already done, can we move quicker to another phase of the project with him, and then we can really nail him down as to, here's exactly what we're gonna do and what we're gonna use and what's gonna be the deliverables.
Yeah, and that's where the district would have input in your plans, and like, the people that we're meeting with in a couple weeks, it's like the tourism, the chamber, um, maybe the county board, I'm trying to think, anyway, but we're gonna take all the different plans that people have already started and take all that input and put it together, rather than, in the past, there's just been like, this group is gonna work on this and focus on this, and then they're gonna do this, but there's never been anything cohesive, and so we just really want to maximize this opportunity, and that's really...
And he's aware of all, all of that and what exists, and he has reassured us, we've had many conversations, that, that, that he will utilize all that information and will not be duplicating or charging for something that's already done.
So really, you're looking for someone to drive the bus, and your organization's gonna drive the bus?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In school terms, yeah.
Otherwise, he's never asked me to drive a bus.
Do you have a CDL?
Do.
Other questions from the board?
Does this just come out of Jan Ed, what's this come out of?
I would imagine it's out of the education fund purchase service.
Other questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion then, um, to approve the recommendation presented by the administration for the Jackson Growth Alliance revitalization efforts.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Terry?
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Am I allowed to vote?
Yes. Mr. Green?
Upstain.
Mrs. James?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Miller?
No.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Last item of new business is the approval of the repayment of the interfund loan from the working cash fund to the IMRF slash social security.
And this was due to late property taxes coming to us, we asked for the loan previously, you approved it, administration now recommends that we pay back that interfund loan from the working cash to IMRF.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the repayment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we have a need to go into closed session.
Make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open News Act Five, all marking file statutes one twenty slash two C to review, discussion of minutes lawfully closed, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
Second?
Second.
Terry?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries, let's take five minutes.